The February 19th Link Community College Board of Education Work Session will now be called to order. Celia, will you please call roll?
Yes, Kevin Alltucker.
Here.
Denise Diamond.
Here.
Austin Folnagie. Steve Mattel.
Here.
Zach Maholland.
Here.
Julie Weisman.
Yeah.
Okay. Before we begin today's meeting, I would like to take a moment to honor the memory of former LCC Board Member Denise Shine. Sorry, Dennis Shine. Dennis served Link Community College as the Zone Three Representative from July 1st, 2001 to June 30th, 2005, and was a dedicated member of our community. Please join me in a moment of silence as we recognize Dennis's service. Thank you very much. We'll be moving on to the land recognition. The land acknowledgement speaker for this meeting is Frankie Coconore. Frankie, will you please provide the recognition?
I'd like to start our meeting with the acknowledgement that the land we are on is the traditional homelands of the Kalpuya people. The Kalpuya were stewards of this very land for over 14,000 years before their traditional way of life was forever disrupted. We start our meeting with humility and reverence for the original inhabitants, the Kalpuya.
Thank you. We'll be moving on to the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the February 19th work session agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion moved by Steve and seconded by Denise. All in favor of adopting the February 19th Board Work Session Agenda, please say aye.
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 And opposed? And it's unanimous passes six to zero. Please note that the equity lens has been provided for the board's reference. Do we have any questions or comments to the responses to information requests? Okay, not seeing anything. Our first item of discussion is board policies. President Bulger, will you please introduce the speaker?
Yes, we would like to have Brett Roulette come and talk to us about the board policies. This is the first reading.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Maholland, President Bulger, members of the board. This evening, we bring before you quite a few policies for your review. There are nine policies in total. Did want to make sure you saw that one additional policy was added earlier today. Protection of immigrant students, we'll get to that last, but make sure you are using the updated materials, please. As you can see on the first page of the materials, I tried to divide the policies into three categories. There's one policy that's being brought back for additional consider or additional discussion this evening. That's Board Policy 275, interfund loans. Then we have four policies that are kind of in the standard five-year renewal or five-year review process, and those are four of human resource-related policies. And then we also have four policies that fall in the category of either resolving a conflict or being of a time-sensitive issue. So we'll start with the, and I'm going to try to go through these as quickly as possible. I'm assuming you've had an opportunity to look through the packet. But if you have any questions, please feel free to stop me and we can go over them. For Board Policy 275, interfund loans, this was brought before you for a first reading late last year. There was some, I think, concern around the use of early retirement fund in the policy. To assist with the process, I did try to go out and find a similar board policy on interfund loans for any community college, any city government, anywhere I could find in the state of Oregon or the Northwest. And I was unable to find a policy that was anywhere near, you know, similar to what we have, where we excluded funds that were non-restricted funds to begin with. What I did find were examples like the city of Portland, which called on itself to use interfund loans whenever possible. And that is because they identified that you spend money externally from banks anytime you have to take out external loans. So many places have a policy to use these interfund loans whenever possible, and they specified in their policy. And I did include a link to the city of Portland's policy, so you could review that if you'd like. If you have additional questions on interfund loans, we're happy to go over that. I can answer them, or we have Kara here as well who can answer those. If we're okay to move on to the next group.
Questions now or at the end?
It's your, however you would prefer to handle it. If it's easier to handle them one at a time, I.
Any questions or comments on this one at this time? Denise?
So we're keeping the language in there that early retirement can be used?
So the reason staff made this recommendation, and it's, it is pretty much because we could not find an example of other entities that would exclude funds like early retirement funds that are otherwise non-restricted funds. There are funds that we are not able to touch, like financial aid funds. But in the case of early retirement funds, and I did go to Kara to make sure I was explaining this properly. The early retirement fund exists in basically a budget, on a paper budget. But the funds for our early retirement fund are in the same bank account with all of our other money. It's like if you had a budget for your house and you said, I'm going to spend this much money on bills. I'm going to spend this much money on food. You put all of that in the same checking account. And so that's how our early retirement fund works currently. All of the money is in the same account. There are some, some, some small side accounts, but most of it is in the same checking account or some investment accounts. And so that, that's why it's included here. It's best practice. This does not authorize the college to make a loan right now. This gives you as a board the option to use that tool if you would like at a future date. Any interfund loans will require a resolution of the board, board action in order to occur. Hope did that.
I have a question with regards to this. So my understanding is the main issue here is around the eighth quarter payment issue, that the state delays our final fiscal year payment add to the next fiscal year, so that you get sort of an extra payment in the first quarter of the next year. And so there's basically like a ninety, maybe 180-day window where we really need these funds to cover. It looks like we're saying it would be repaid within the next fiscal year, so giving ourselves 365 days to repay it. Can you speak to, you know, why a full fiscal year as opposed to maybe giving ourselves a shorter window? If that's, if it's really, you know, focused on this one particular problem?
Yeah, I can, I can help answer that. The, the language says must be repaid within the year. It doesn't mean we wait a year to pay that back. Traditionally, it's done within the next few months, once that fund is back to its whole status, whatever revenue resource. And really, this is only a method that's used during a fiscal year-end because this is fund accounting. All relates to complying with GAAP and GASB requirements. So it's, it's very technical, only used at fiscal year-end and usually is a quick turnaround the next month to get it paid back on. And again, it's part of our fund accounting structure.
I would potentially have an interest in, you know, narrowing how this fund can be used to that specific purpose of the eighth quarter payment. But that's my only comment on this at this time. Any, I don't see any other questions or comments on this one. I think we can move on. Okay.
The next group of four policies really all go together. They're for human resource-related policies. There is only one minor change. The four policies here are Board Policy 515, compensation and benefits. Board Policy 520, cultural competency and diversity awareness. Board Policy 530, human resources, global direction. And Board Policy 555, treatment of staff. And you'll know on Board Policy 515, compensation and benefits, the board has previously indicated a desire to move to gender, gender-neutral pronouns in, in policy language. And so there's a small revision proposed for this policy to use gender-neutral pronouns. Other than that, there's no, no revision suggested for, for the other three policies. Any questions on those? Okay. The next group of three policies, Board Policy 320, chairperson's role. Board Policy 2210, board of education officers. And Board Policy 2340 agendas is an attempt to clean up three very related policies. The board recently adopted Board Policy 2210, board of education officers. When doing so, it did not retire Board Policy 320, chairperson's role. So you have two policies currently that list the duties of the chair. One in Board Policy 320 and the other in Board Policy 2210. What I attempted to do was take the language from Board Policy 320 that had not been included in the, in Board Policy 2210 when it was originally adopted, in an attempt that will allow us, if we move that language over to the newer policy, to retire the old, older policy. At the same time, the board recently adopted Board Policy 2340 agendas. And in that policy outlined how agendas are created for, for meetings. There is a reference in the Chairperson's Role, Board Policy 320, an older policy that also references the chair's role in setting the agendas for meetings. And so it's really a board conversation there as to the role that the chair plays in the agenda setting and how the, the best language you feel to combine those two policies, if that's the direction you'd like to go. And then there's one final policy, but maybe I should stop here and see if you have questions on those three policies.
Yeah, I'll have a comment, but if there's any questions.
Chair, we'd just like to also talk about the, the subscription to the policy library. Just as a little bit of context, the four-digit policies are part of the subscription library that the college entered into. And I don't recall the year, but maybe Brett recalls the year that the, that the board actually wanted to subscribe to that service. So we, when I came into the institution, then the college was going through the four-digit policies just as a full sweep and then always intending to go back to the three-digit policies and integrate or retire those particular policies. So I just wanted to give a little bit of context.
Austin?
Overall, especially with the agenda setting, the chair plays a really critical role, especially in collaboration with the president to create the agendas, bring forward the agendas and so forth. And I'm not sure if retiring this language would put that at risk. I do have a few potential language suggestions, and I don't know where in this process that I can make those suggestions, if that is something that I can email. Just clarification on how I can present those suggestions.
I believe that we would be approving these at our next board meeting. So I think that yourself or, you know, others could put forth recommended edits to these board policies and share those out ahead of the meeting, and then we'll have those ready as options.
Understood, yeah. So, but we're planning on putting these on the consent agenda. Obviously, anybody could take it off the consent agenda for discussion, but you're saying that you're open to suggestions in language.
I, if someone else doesn't put forward recommended edits for these, then I will be. So I'm expecting that this will be an action item at our next meeting that we'll have some discussion and then we'll have some action around it.
Understood. Thank you.
Can we pull up those board policies, the three-digit board policy? BP 320?
Chair, are we doing a screen share on this?
That's what I was asking for. I thought it was, I thought it'd be there already.
Thank you.
Okay, so if we could go to Board Policy 320 and specifically Part D. Yep. Be page 11.
Page 11, yeah.
You're on 12 right now. You just need to go up one more page. Okay. Can you highlight Part D for me, please? So this is one of the lines from this particular board policy that did not get pulled forward to the new policies. And I think it's incredibly important that this not get lost in translation. This board is elected by the public to oversee the community college. And it is incredibly important that the board is able to set its own agendas and run its agendas. This is not to pull away from the amazing work that President Bulger does to support us. But at the end of the day, I think that the board needs to be responsible for its agendas and that the board chair, as the elected chair of the board, is the one that has been delegated that authority to have the final agenda-setting authority. After consultation with the president and developing the, 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 the agenda with the president, at the end of the day, the chair as the elected leader of the elected representatives on the board needs to have that final authority. And so I will be bringing forth or partnering with others to bring forth an edit that pulls that language forward into the proposed new board policies. And so that is, I plan to bring that forward at our next meeting. Unless there's any other discussion at this time, we can go to the final board policy. Julie?
Just a question for clarity, Chair, what the remark that you said. This old statement, D, does, has no mention of the president of the college whatsoever. Doesn't say that in collaboration with or what, is that the language that you want to bring forward into the new document? Or you, I mean, I'm, I'm just concerned that.
Yeah, I think it's, sorry. I think it's incredibly important that we maintain the collaborative relationship between the president and the chair. There's a few different pieces of language. If you go to, I believe it's 2110, which would be the new policy. It actually does reference working with the president. But then it removes the part of, of the, the chair actually setting the agenda. It says, work with the president according to this other policy where it says that the president develops the agenda in consultation with the chair and the vice chair. And so I think that this is, through this translation, is effectively handing veto authority over our agenda to our hired president. And I don't, I, I on principle do not think that that is appropriate. And that is why I am recommending bringing, maintaining the role of the chair in setting the agenda in collaboration with our president and with our vice chair.
Mr. Chair.
I would just, I would just request that you, that you submit language to us in advance of the meeting.
Absolutely.
That we have time to look at it so that we're not trying to do something on the fly inside of our meeting. Wordsmithing in a meeting like this is impossible.
Agreed. Thank you.
But Mr. Chair, just to clarify, you, you, you referenced the, the agenda policy as a new policy. Board Policy 2340 was approved by the board in 2020 and is your current policy for setting agendas. That's, that is why staff is bringing you proposed language to clarify how agendas are set. And it's the, you know, we're looking to the board for guidance on this. I, I thought I was being helpful by moving over language from the, the role of the chair policy. But 2340 was more recently reviewed and passed by the board. It is your policy.
Yes, I think as we're retiring this old policy, it's important that we pull that language forward. And I look forward to the discussion in two weeks. Kevin?
Thanks. Just a couple thoughts. So I look forward to receiving your suggested edits. And I'd just like to offer, you know, I think good policy removes kind of person, you know, we have to remove personalities from the, the way we think about policy. Policy should, you know, protect the institution moving forward, no matter who is chair or no matter who's on the board. I don't know that I'd be comfortable with one person, the chair, being responsible or have the authority of establishing the agenda. I, I don't think that is in line with what the state community college association's rules are. And it's not in line with the, with the collaborative nature and culture of, of this board. So I would just offer those concerns, but again, I look forward to receiving your edits. Thank you.
Austin?
As president of Oregon Community College Association, I, when we create our agendas, I create them in collaboration with our executive director. That is a perfectly acceptable form of governance. And yeah, I would just say, I would agree that the board's role and the board's chair's role is to have a collaborative discussion along with the vice chair in creating the agenda. And so with that, I, I think there's some good language that could be produced here that meets both the concerns that Zach has and concerns that Julie and Kevin that you brought up.
You think that's it for that item, and we have one more board policy?
One more to go, and that's Board Policy 650, protection of immigrant students. And we're recommending a small change revision for this policy. The current policy instructs employees on campus, if there are government agents or ICE officials that, that, that come to campus to during working hours notify the president's office, during non-working hours notify public safety. To make it easier, so there's no confusion amongst employees when working hours are, because we have employees working 24 hours a day on campus. The recommendation is everyone should contact public safety and public safety will immediately contact the president's office to notify President Bulger. And so it's a very small revision, and this will align the board policy with the procedure that has been created for employees on campus.
Austin?
A few clarifying questions. So obviously, this is creating a dynamic of a point person essentially, to have one individual that would deal with ICE and conduct any communication with ICE. And would also the directive of the public safety officer is to protect that individual, whether it's student, community member, so forth?
There would be more than one individual trained, public safety officers, the department would be trained, especially the operators that answer the call. So they, they would take the call and immediately notify President Bulger. The procedure outlines for employees exactly what their responsibility is, and it is not the responsibility of an employee to determine whether a warrant is a legitimate warrant or make those types of decisions. The process in place by notifying the president allows us to, to go through the, the procedures that we have in place for, for various incidents that we may face. And whether it's notifying legal counsel or what, you know, what the, the instance necessitates. We just felt it's easier for employees campus-wide to have one number that they know to call if they need to, and then have the operators at public safety trained on what to do next.
Perfect. Great. Thank you so much.
Okay, any other questions or comments or discussion related to board policies? Not seeing any. Thank you very much, Brett.
Thank you.
Okay, and next item on our agenda is the Cultural Competency Professional Development Report. President Bulger, will you please introduce the speaker?
Yes, I will ask Vice President Turner to come to the podium and talk about this report. This is an annual report that's required by state statute, and we're presenting it today.
Good evening, excuse me, and thanks for the opportunity to talk to you about our cultural competency training production this past year. This program is based upon Oregon revised statute. It's number 350.375 and requires each community college and institution of higher learning in the state to have a professional development program whereby our employees engage in cultural competency training. The law defines cultural competency as an understanding of how institutions and individuals can respond respectfully and effectively to people from all cultures, economic statuses, language backgrounds, races, ethnic backgrounds, disabilities, religions, genders, gender identifications, sexual orientations, veteran statuses, and other characteristics in a manner that recognizes, affirms, and values the worth and preserves the dignity of individuals, families, and communities. In the report that we've provided you this evening, you can see that the campus has varying requirements for continuing education in cultural competency. Classified and managers have one requirement, faculty have a different negotiated requirement. On page two of the report, you can see a breakdown of participation in the training. You can see what their participation rates are and the average number of hours that employees in each group have participated in. I want to just say that in, in taking over the program from Greg Evans, who previously held, held the role, Greg was very concerned about creating the sense of mandate or requirement for folks to have to participate. He wanted to just provide opportunity for people to participate in the training. And part of my goal in taking this on is to increase the ability for accountability across all groups. And so one of the things that we've created with our IT department is a series of reports that they can run to see what their employees have, have taken in terms of the training and be able to follow up with those employees to increase participation where it's, where it's needed. As you can see from the report, it's a little more difficult for our part-time employees to participate at the same level as full-time employees as, as you might expect. And then from page three onward, you can see just the, the variety of the trainings that people participate in. Just tremendous distribution and, and lots and lots of opportunities that people avail themselves of. So with that, that's my report, and welcome any questions you might have.
I see Denise's hand.
Thank you. What kind of funding are we talking about for this? Where does the funding come from? Does our, our budget, do we get any state or federal dollars on this?
No, it's, it's all internally funded. So there, there are obviously a number of, of free training options that are available, both on campus and within, within the community. We offer the ability for people to get credit by attendance where they can submit a form saying, I attended this training. And, and so folks, folks do that quite frequently, but there is no state funding for this, for this mandate.
Thank you.
Julie?
I just want to thank you and your team. This is quite a comprehensive list. Some of my fat, my team has attended some of these trainings from community members and participated in a few of them. And I'm just really, really pleased that this is such a comprehensive list and isn't just checking the boxes on some of the standards. So well done.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much. Our last item of discussion is board operating agreements. Vince Adams has provided the draft board agreements based on feedback that was received from the January 26th board retreat. Board members had the opportunity to provide be, feedback and recommend edits. So I would like to open up discussion of the board operating agreements. I think the easiest way to do this would be to open up the responses that we received so that we can screen share that and we can just go through the first set of bullets and then the second set of bullets and then the third set of bullets. And so if you had recommended edits, teny bullets, we will just go through them one by one and you'll have an opportunity to share your thoughts and hopefully we can come to consensus around all these. And then in terms of process, are we going to vote on this at our next meeting? Or what's the process to finalize this in that sense?
The board could certainly vote on it at the next meeting, and this could be a first read.
Okay. Okay, if we could zoom in. Okay, and then, so under governance and decision-making, it looks like we had one point related to the third bullet here and another point down below also related to the third bullet that I think sort of came to the same issue. Are you able to scroll down? This is going to be difficult, isn't it? Okay, so let's talk about the third bullet, and then we'll have to probably pull up the third bullet in the other document so we can actually see it. So this individual said, represents the entire community, balancing diverse perspectives of the community, students, faculty, and staff. And in the original document, it only said students, faculty, and staff. So this person said we should add community there. And then if we scroll down towards a little. And then if we scroll down towards a little bit to the fourth box, I think similar, this, I said the same thing of that it should also have community. I said, end community members instead of putting community at the, before students. I said, end community members after. And then for the next sentence, I added the three words at the end, end community benefit. The board will consider multiple perspectives in decision-making while ensuring that its actions align with the institution's long-term success, student outcomes, and community benefit. So we could go to the original document, please. So that's the third bullet there is the, as trustees, the board represents the entire community, balancing the diverse perspectives of students, faculty, and staff. So the first edit would be to add community there or end community members. And then the second potential edit would be adding end community benefit to the last sentence. Any thoughts on those two ideas?
I think that trustee Weisman has a suggested rewrite as well to consider.
Okay. So I think we've, go ahead, Kevin. You're muted, Kevin.
Thank you. I think Julie was adding me. Now Julie's muted.
I'm in the, I wrote it in the, in the chat box.
Okay.
I don't need to speak much further.
Okay. Well, my, my response is that I, I'm not sure that we're responsible to the entire community. We're responsible to the college and through the college, the entire community benefits. So I would have to wrestle with adding those suggestions to add community benefit because we're trustees of the college, not trustees of the community.
Okay. So I don't know how much wordsmithing we want to do here in real time. It seems like there's been two recommendations around adding the word community into that sentence. But again, this other thought about adding and community benefit to the things we're trying to deliver. I have Julie and then Austin.
I have been reminded that text in the text box is not public record. And so if I'm kind of suggest a rewrite, I have to actually say it into the public record. So I was just, I was just wordsmithing the combination of what y'all said by just adding a, while balancing the diverse needs and perspectives in that little section after entire community. So I just wanted to do it so I could in the, we can wordsmith it later, but I just needed to read it into the public record. Sorry.
Austin.
Just wanted to communicate my support in adding the word community.
Okay. And any comments on the adding and community benefit to the final sentence?
Just my same comment holds there too.
All right. Then can we? What, what is the, the preference? Should we be bringing our edits formally as motions for next meeting?
No, no, this is a work session, so we can't do that. But I would suggest that you have the discussion, we take the notes, we bring a kind of a red line document back with all of the suggestions. So this particular bullet would have two different suggestions for how it's written.
Okay. And if people want to push back on those changes at our next meeting, people will have the opportunity to do so.
That's what I'll suggest.
Thank you. Okay. Going back to the suggested changes, I think the only other one was on voice to voices, literally just adding a single letter. So that's just a simple bullet to student voice to voices. So I think we can move to meeting structure and conduct now. If we can switch back to that other doc. Okay. So key performance indicators, not specific budget, when does that show up? The board will not tolerate delete sentence, previous sentences, the affirmative conduct. Does someone want to explain their thoughts here?
I can, if we go back to the original. Let's see. That's.
It looks like the end of the fourth bullet is the part about not tolerating crosstalk, interruptions, or personal attacks. You're suggesting deleting that sentence? Is that what your suggestion was?
I believe so. Because I appreciate language in the affirmative. And so by that, I mean that there's already ethical conduct, respectful conduct. And so discussions will be conducted with respect. That covers it, curiosity and a commitment to problem solving. And I think that that establishes the desired outcomes, the desired environment. And that's why I think that the next sentence is not necessary.
Okay. And then you had a question about budget. Where does that fall into this?
Yeah, I was just wondering about that because of our fiduciary responsibilities. I didn't know if there was, it doesn't fit in there, but I, I, I guess I was wondering where it does belong, if it belongs.
Just trustee Diamond, there certainly is a board policy, maybe a couple, two or three board policies about the board's responsibilities that in, include the fiduciary responsibility.
Okay. And then key performance indicators, I believe that's the first bullet. And I had a similar thought around key performance indicators of, we probably want to, like achievement of key performance indicators might be a potential word to add there. Just to, you know, we're not just going to talk about them, but we're trying to, you know, reach them would be a potential change. Could we go back to the comments? Okay. So the next person here, second to last bullet seems inaccurate. We attempted to achieve consensus. When that is not possible, we make decisions based on majority. Did you have a recommended change to the language based upon that idea?
I think that was me. I guess I'm interested in feedback from other board members. It just struck me as a little odd as to, you know, yes, we will strive for consensus and make decisions as a unified governing body. I, at the end of the day, we, we vote and there's a, and often it, you know, it turns on a majority of four to three or five to two. So it just struck me as a little odd.
Any comments from other board members about that?
Uh, sorry, clarification on which section we're on?
We are on section two, bullet five.
Appreciate that.
So Steve, what was your recommended language on that? Or was it more of a question?
I, I didn't offer a change in language. I just called out that bullet and thought that it, it was odd.
Austin. I'm sorry, Denise.
No, no, this, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say, would it, given your input there, would it kind of make sense to have it that board members, you know, vote and strive? So putting in that in fact, decisions come down to a vote?
Something like that. I mean, the way I'm hearing, you know, the conversations being structured is that we aren't necessarily obligated right now to work to wordsmith, right? We're, I thought we were trying to stay away from that. I just brought up the point is, and if it turned out that others agreed that we might want to modify that and, you know, and make clear that when we can't reach consensus, we, even when we can, for that matter, we take a vote. And that's, that's the, that's the record of decision. And then leave it to staff to, you know, to adapt, adjust the wording based on, you know, the sentiments expressed during this discussion.
I've got Austin. I've got Austin and then Julie.
This is similar to the language we had in our previous board operating agreements. And it, again, it's about striving for consensus, right? And, and we make decisions as a unified governing body. And even if those perspectives differ, you know, if we have a four, three, we respect the decision that's made by the board. And that's essentially the spirit of what I'm seeing in this language. Yeah. And I think that that's really critical to basic governance.
Julie.
The only thing I would add to that is the, the, this is operating agreements for the board and how we agree to operate together. There's Robert's rules of order and public law that govern how we do that. And so no matter how we strive for consensus, public law requires us to do a vote, you know, and to actually exercise all that. I don't think we need to outlie, I don't think we need to duplicate the legal requirements, the parliamentary law, all the public law that guides us or that we're required to comply with inside of agreements of how we want to operate. So my only thing with, although I, I actually agree with you, Steve, I think that, you know, it's going to get down to a majority vote anyway. But I think that the, what Austin was saying is striving for consensus. We would hope that we would all reach agreement before we, you know, moved on from a topic and voted. That's all I'm going to say.
Not seeing any other discussion on that. I'm going to move to bullet three of that document. And the other person said something similar to what I said. So this is about how things get on the agenda. And as drafted, the two ways to get something on the agenda are to request it be placed on the agenda at the end of one of our board meetings, or that they can email the chair and the president. I would like to add a third option, which is through the work session poll option that we have developed previously. And I think Kevin had sort of some thoughts on this. Do you want to share your, your thoughts at this time, Kevin? And we can, yeah.
Sure. Yeah. So my comments were centered around the fact that I would like to formalize the process by which an item gets added to the agenda. And, and I wanted to revisit your kind of supposal that was made last fall where the formalized process would look something like, hey, I have this thing I want to get on the agenda. Are there at least two other board members that agree that, yeah, this, this should go on the agenda? So that there's some process that prevents a single board member from being able to put an item on the agenda. So I want to move away from that and move towards a more formalized process where it takes at least three board members to get something on the agenda. And that, that being said, there's always going to be time to time where there are, you know, emergency or very urgent issues that are not going to fit into that more formal process. So I'd like to have a board discussion about what that might look like and also a board discussion about formalizing the process to get items on the agenda. Thanks.
So just to clarify, the current process, we do have the work session poll that Celia sent out previously that we are able to fill out to get three board members to approve a work session poll. We can also bring those up at the end of our meetings. And then we also have had a situation where their board members have had proposed motions that they wanted to have discussed during meetings. And the advice that I received from Vince Adams with OSBA was that unless there is something wrong with the motion, that we, I should generally add it to the upcoming agenda. I think in my mind, the delineation between something that's a motion that someone wants to discuss and something that would rise to the level of a work session poll, something that needs a work session poll, I think if there's going to be staff time dedicated to it, to doing research, to prep for a work session, that that's a time where it really does make sense to ensure we have at least three board members that want to have that discussion before staff go out and do any research. But deferring to what Vince Adams with OSBA said regarding motions, and if they are in order to go ahead and put them onto the agenda, time permitting, that is my, that is how I've been approaching it thus far. And I just wanted that clarification out there before, as we get ready to discuss. And so I have Austin, and then I've got Kevin back in the queue again.
All right. Can everyone hear me okay? I guess my mic has been pretty low. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. Excellent. First off, I will say that because of our current agenda setting process, we have the chair and vice chair. Technically, it does take three board members to put something on the agenda, even if one board member suggests it, like via email or something like that. Vice chair and chair obviously get to have a discussion with the president on that and decide to move it forward or not, and, and/or respond to that board member as to why it wasn't moved forward. Mike Geister and I used to have these conversations a lot. He would bring forward a lot of different agenda items. And, you know, we would, I would bring that up with the chair and vice chair or as chair and with our vice chair at the time. So, um, yeah, I just wanted to kind of state that fact. And I'm open to the idea of this work session poll as well, because I feel like as many avenues as possible is beneficial as a whole. So.
Kevin.
Thanks. A couple of things, just real quickly. We also, I would like to see the process include a conversation with the president, you know, early on, because I might have what I think is the greatest idea ever, and I want to get it on the agenda. But in fact, it's not a great idea according to the president and the staff. And because she has more information about all the working parts. And so I wouldn't want to get something on the agenda and completely bypass, you know, consultation and collaboration with the president. So I want to add that. Want to address what Austin just said. There's been at least one, maybe two incidents in the past few months where a board member brought something to the chair and vice chair, and there was disagreement among the board chair and vice chair about that agenda item. And the chair made the decision with the consultation from Vince Adams to put that item on the agenda. So I'm just, I'm, I'm interested in kind of tightening up our process. That's all. I'd like to, and maybe I'm the only one unclear about it. And if so, you know, I'm, I'm willing to be schooled, but it just, I'm, I'm confused about the process and I want to formalize it. Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks for that, Kevin. I, I agree with your point that if we're, someone's going to be submitting a work session poll, that they should work with the president to ensure that that is, you know, a viable work session before submitting that to the broader group. I will ask, you know, board members, if they want to get something on the agenda, that the, the work possession poll would be the best approach. We haven't actually used it yet. I have drafted a work session poll, which hopefully we'll be talking about, didn't get on the agenda for tonight. So I'll probably talk about it at the end of next meeting to get support from. So, so, you know, ideally work session poll to get something on the agenda, especially if it's going to require staff research. And then with regards to motions, you know, under Robert's rules, any board member can bring a motion at any meeting. So if a board member requests getting a motion onto the agenda, I think that having it on the agenda is better than them having it, you know, brought up in the middle of the meeting without you having any heads up that it's going to be brought up. So, so that, if, if somebody's going to make a motion at a meeting and they say, I want to make this motion at the meeting, I think it's better generally to have it on the agenda as a discussion item or an action item so we can get to it rather than it being brought up without that heads up that it, that it's going to be a discussion item. Yes.
I thought this might be helpful since a few of the trustees have mentioned the possible impact on staff time with items being placed on the agenda. Prior to the board adopting the current agenda setting policy in 2020, the former board policy was board policy 305. You can find the retired board policies in board docs. There is a sentence in that policy that was not carried forward because the board adopted basically word for word, the OCCA of library version of agenda setting. But the sentence from a former, the former policy that you might want to consider since you're going to be wordsmithing board policies next meeting. The sentence says, the item will be added to a future agenda unless the president states the item will require an unacceptable amount of staff time or funds, in which case the board must act to place the item on a future. an unacceptable amount of staff time or funds, in which case the board must act to place the item on a future agenda. So basically would take a majority of the board saying, yes, we want this on the agenda. If, if the president says that it's a time or funding issue.
But any board member could have requested an item that would have then put in, but been placed on the agenda barring that.
Correct. And that's why the almost word for word for the current agenda setting policy, the past policy said, the chair and vice chair in consultation with the president set the agenda. And then it goes into talking about how items get placed on the agenda. But I just wanted to bring that to your attention. If the other trustees want to look at the language, you just go to policies in board docs and you can click on the small triangle and go to retired policies. And again, it's board policy 305.
Okay. Thank you for that. So again, my recommended edit here is that we add a third option, which is through that work session poll language that we adopted last year. Kevin, if you have concerns about people being able to place something on the agenda via email to the chair and president, then please recommend some language that we can discuss at that next meeting with, after, you know, in consultation with the president. Okay. I think we're all set on that one, which means I think we are on to the next section, which there was only one comment related to the bullets of. So I believe there was a question here about evaluations. Regular self evaluations means what? Annual, biannual evaluation present annual, biannual? The board will support the president in leading the college to ensure the success and wellbeing of the campus community. Can you speak to these comments? I believe Denise?
Yes, I can. Let's see where, thank you. Can we go to the origin? I'll talk about evaluations. Can we go to the original language? Somebody scrolled down.
You scrolled a little too far. It's this section.
Thank you.
It's like bullet four.
I just thought this, just putting in a couple of timeframes. The board will conduct regular self evaluations. You know, I don't know really, regular means what is the question I posed to myself? You know, is this an annual self evaluation is, I mean, I don't know. I was just trying to get a little more clarity on that. And then the board will conduct a structured evaluation of the president. Again, is this annual? Is this biannual? When is this? You know, so we could be a little bit more specific because evaluations are specific instruments. And I think it would be useful to say, you know, when that occurs.
Sure. Well, thank you, trustee Diamond. I think that all of these were based on the input from the board members and the president from the session that Vince Adams did. So presumably this all reflects the, the input that was, that he received. The, that last bullet about is related to a board policy, actually, on the board's evaluation of the president. So it's, it's listed in there that there is an annual evaluation and we certainly agree on what that process looks like through the year. So this just says that yes, we'll, we'll evaluate the president's in agreement. The one that's before that is, must have come from the group about the board. The way I read it is that the board would check in with itself, basically to say, how are we doing? Are we following what we said we would do these agreements? So, so that's what I would, would, would think. And that would be probably up to the chair and the vice chair on when that would occur. Maybe not in a formal way, but maybe just once in a while.
Well, just to clarify, I mean, I'm just talking about inserting like the word annual. So we know that the president's evaluation is annual, but I just thought it would clarify the language. And so given that, then from my point of view, it also makes sense for the board to be certain to have an annual self evaluation. And so it was just a matter of that clarity that I was questioning.
I've got Julie next.
Um, I'm fine with the, uh, the, um, the one about the president, because that actually does happen annually. It's just part of our process. But the self evaluation of the board, I'm with Denise. I think that should be annual instead of regular. Cause you know, I've only been here, that hasn't happened since I've been here. Or it was, it happened right before I got here or as I was getting here or something like that. So will that happen again next year? What's regular? So I agree with you. We could, we could change that word.
Yeah, I agree. Having it annually would be beneficial, whether that's tied with our annual board retreat or some other time of the year. I think just making it a regular standard thing would be valuable.
And tying it with the annual board retreat that happens in July, is that acceptable? Because we can add that.
That would be my, my, I, I think that that would probably be, be acceptable. Yes. Okay. Please, Diane, Denise, it looked like you had one other comment there.
Oh. The lit teacher in me likes to go back and make full circles. And by that, I mean, if we go back to the bullet point about support, the very first thing on, all the way back. Sorry. Yeah. If, if we go back to the very first page, I was just trying to incorporate the language that said, I think I was suggesting that support the president and these, in what we've talked about here, to ensure the success and wellbeing of our students and I think that's what I started to quote. Anyway, it was just to kind of come back full circle. That, that is what we're, you know, we're, we're saying that we're doing. Anyway, that, I don't know if I've made that clear, but that was sort of the idea there.
So if we go back to that third section to the second bullet, were you thinking that we might tweak the second half of that sentence?
Something like that. Yeah.
Around, and I'm sorry, what was the language again that you were thinking would be better?
Executing the college's mission and we, we insert that language from the very first that basically said what that, you know, mission is. So.
And take out the, and publicly demonstrate confidence clause.
Well, we do that anyway. So.
So I, it sounds to me like for the, the first bullet, perhaps to ensure the success and wellbeing of our students. Is that?
Yeah, something. Like that. Yeah, that sounds right. It's not to.
College community or something like that. Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you, everyone. I very much.
I have a quick question for everybody. This is not on this. So there's this legislative summit coming up, right? That we've talked about. And I'm just wondering, are we like calendaring that? Are we, is it, everybody try to be there? Are we carpooling? I, I just, I've never been to one of these and I was just kind of wondering how we're looking at that. I, I know we want to be very supportive and it's come up.
It's coming up in just a couple of weeks here, right? So the, it was the fifth and the sixth. Is that right?
Right.
And is there a carpool option if board members were looking to get there together and save some gas?
I think it'll probably work best if I coordinate with Celia and have her communicate out to the board. And we can work with all of you on who's planning to attend day one, day two, or both days.
Okay.
And related to that, don't, I have it on my calendar that we also have a, a board meeting.
So we do have a board meeting that night on the fifth.
Okay. Okay. So just, that's what I was trying to figure out just exactly how people are, you know, how we're trying to coordinate this. Cause I imagine some people will do two days. Some people can only do one. But that'd be great just to hear who's going and.
Can we get a quick, quick sense from folks? If you're planning on going one or both days, like who's planning on going the first day on the Wednesday?
I would like to try.
Austin and Denise and I, and anybody that thinks they're probably going to go the second day.
That's lobby day, isn't it? Community college lobby day.
Yeah. So it looks like Austin and Denise might be able to make it both days. I'm probably just going to be able to go the first day. I have a conflict the second day. And so if y'all would like to carpool, let's get an email out and, you know, when to meet and all that stuff. And if any of our other board members would like to join into that, I'm sure we can keep them posted and they can join if they would like to.
Thank you.
Okay. I believe we are getting to our closing items. So first is board member questions and comments. Any questions or comments? And next is future meeting dates. So please note that our next regular meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, March 5th. And with that, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.